To a master performance contracting agreement with Siemens. Would you mind giving us a little bit of context? And a bit about how we got here to this amended resolution?
Well, hello, everyone. So I think the last we spoke was December, was it? Okay. And this is Chris Cat with Siemens. I'm sure you've spoken here before. So most recently, after reviewing the, the work and the different projects, we were asked to kind of reconfigure some of them. And I, if you don't mind, I'm going to let Chris really talk about it. But reducing the charging stations, removing bipolar ionization, a heat pump, electric heat pump, and installing fast charger. So those have all been factored into what you have before you now. And if you want to take it away.
Excellent. My name is Chris Cat from Siemens Smart Infrastructure. I'm joined by my engineering colleagues Raj Salvaraj and Tommy Garrett. Here this evening. It's good to be back. I've appreciated the, the feedback we've gotten from council over the last several months, and we've made some changes at request of council to ensure this project delivers on what's best for the citizens of the city of Binghamton. If you'll join me on page two, a quick overview of energy performance contracting. A single source responsibility rests with Siemens. Energy saving retrofits help fund existing infrastructure needs. Article nine was created by New York State so that public authorities, cities, counties, towns, and school districts could fund important infrastructure work. Helping with energy savings in sustainability and utilizing those savings to help support it. On page three, this is an overview of the changes made to this project through the feedback of city council. Number one was the removal of bipolar ionization at City Hall. Two, removal of emergency generator heat pumps at the plant. We added a level three fast charger at the Water Street Garage. That's been a city priority and that'll allow that project to move quicker and get that important work done. And then we also removed five level two chargers. In terms of a little bit of background on this project, we've been working on this for about a year and a half with the city of Binghamton. This is all aimed around reducing energy consumption, right? And also expanding out a network of EV chargers. Currently, the city has several highly used EV chargers and as this technology gains adoption, ensuring that residents and visitors and tourists across the city have access to those chargers by getting some new ones in. We've utilized a number of different grant funding sources as well to leverage those. There have been some changes since this project was originally conceived. Chiefly, the impact of tariffs as well as interest rates and incentives. So we're eager to move this project forward so that the city can leverage these advantages in access to this critical funding. Page four, this is a breakdown of what we call thims by facility type. Would you like us to go over these individually or? Page five, again, an overview of the impact of this project from a sustainability perspective. This is the equivalent, doing this work today is the equivalent of taking eighty seven cars off the road a year or planting three hundred and seventy-three acres of trees. So definitely this council took some bold action with your climate action plan. So this is in keeping with what you've already done. And is one step further to making Binghamton a more resilient city. A couple of quick highlights on this project. This project would complete the LED efforts. So the city's been converting a number of its lights, especially streetlights to LED. This expands that into all of your buildings and really finishes that off. So you've got some standardization. City EV charging network and also continues to ensure that Binghamton is a leader in the region in terms of sustainability. There's lots of exciting work going on at the university in terms of research and development on clean green technologies as well. And we're happy to help support that better position the city of Binghamton. And Raj, if you could, could you summarize quickly just the lighting improvements?
Sure. So lighting, as you know, is one of the major consumers of electricity in a commercial building. So we are continuing the efforts that the city has been already doing with converting many of your lights to LED. Some of the, some of the areas in this building have already been converted. So this is to complete the lighting upgrades across all your building portfolio, if you will. Both the interior and exterior building lighting will be converted to LED. Anything that's already done won't be touched. So obviously reduces energy costs and reduces your O and M costs as well because you have less replacements to do. Duckwork ceiling. So this is going out to the next page. This is making sure like, you know, the HVAC ductwork stays sealed. There do, you know, over times holes happen in them in the joints. So this will be to put in this ceiling to make sure the air gets to wherever you're trying to get it to. Programmable temperature control is for your mainly seasonal buildings in your parks. Right now they have those onboard controls as you see on the top left picture. So this, it tends to get put at a certain temperature and people leave it on at that temperature and it stays there. So we would be adding these programmable thermostat sets which are similar to what you would have in your home to make it more scheduled properly and you can set it back in the nighttime and more control your energy usage properly. Weatherization and building envelope and we do include some solar film as well. As you know, many windows in this building get overheated during the summer months, especially the ones facing the sun. So we would add solar film to them to reduce the heat gain. And also we are putting in weatherization to upgrade how you seal the building. So you're not letting in air where you don't want it to come from. And keeping the cold air out and keeping your heat energy or cool energy inside the building. And EV chargers, Chris talked to it briefly. So we had a different count of level two chargers before. So we've kind of updated based on feedback from the city. So now we have thirty-seven level two chargers distributed across the city and two level three chargers at the Water Street Garage. So it'll have a very wide distribution of where these charges are. So it opens up more public access to them. Emergency generator heat pumps. So these are, so existing heat pumps they have or existing emergency generators, they have these electric heaters on them to keep the engine warm. So whenever you have a power outage, the engine comes on fairly quickly. So rather than wasting energy with something that's running twenty-four seven, this one would put in these heat pumps which are more efficient in bringing the engine up to speed. And so you save on electricity and your lesser maintenance and it's in series with the existing heaters. So you extend the life of those heaters.
This is all, the financials on this are already dated because we've got a new more positive interest rate about an hour ago. So as we stand right now, and again, we will send out an updated cash flow based upon the new more positive interest rate. We're a hundred and forty thousand to the positive, even while making all of these improvements and taking no revenue. Obviously, if you take revenue from EV chargers, that number increases. Plus, there's some additional grants and incentives as well. But where we
We have EV revenue in here now.
So we put a projected EV revenue in there. That cash flow is not final. We got a new rate and even if you take the revenue off, you can take the revenue off and you're still positive. This is, this is dated. It changed this afternoon. Yeah. You can totally wipe the revenue out. That would be found in the cash flow we'll send around. That'll be like found revenue. Those illustrative purposes, that'll be found money, not necessarily supporting the actual project. Again, on the right-hand side, you'll see the overall energy savings as well as the thermes in KWH. That data will be useful as the city applies for other funding sources in the future, especially as the state makes additional dollars available through this year's New York State budget. And then on page thirteen, this was also informed by our conversations at the finance committee meeting. Items for future consideration, looking at onsite energy storage, especially because of past climate issues, flooding, et cetera. How can we make these buildings more resistant and do wraparound with solar PV for battery storage onsite? Definitely the decorative street lighting LED conversions worthwhile of consideration. And then also looking at switch gears and water conservation as well. Know an issue that came up a lot during our discussions at finance was the city hall windows. The city hall has some really unique windows. They fully revolve around and were, were certainly top of the line, like they swing totally around on an axis. Certainly top of the line when city hall was constructed, but they continue to be a major source of energy loss for the city. The problem with that is there's not enough savings that are achievable through window replacements alone to cover the costs or kind of they're a necessary boat anchor on any sort of project. But definitely something worth looking at. We went through a lot of questions. I know at finance, is there anything else that comes to mind?
I appreciate the effort and I think it, I mean, when the planning committee met to discuss the questions that you've answered, the additional input that you've included. I appreciate you considering all of the feedback that you got. I think the, I mean, the, I am curious about the updated financials.
Sure.
So certainly looking out
Yep.
For that, but for the presentation itself, for the context, for coming down yet again to share with us. Thank you.
So I was talking to Chris a little bit before the meeting. Raj, I think this would be a question for you. In the scope of work for the attic insulation, you have it set to where it's going to be, let me see, air sealed by spraying fire-rated foam at all top plates and penetrations. And then any existing insulation with the R forty-nine. For the sofa area, it's similar using a fire-rated foam board, foam backer rod, caulk and fire-rated foam. But when you get to box fill and crawl space foam, you decide to go to a two-part foam and then coat it with a fire-rated paint. Why add the extra step and not just fireproof spray the whole thing with fireproof foam? Why do a two-part foam and then paint it?
I'm not sure of the exact answer. I can ask our weatherization contractor and get back to you on that.
Okay. I mean, I've done fire caulking and fire insulation and spraying the fireproofing on I-beams. That's why I know a little bit about it.
This is mainly with regards to the crawl space?
Yeah, it seems like so. The attic and the sofa are basically done the same way. And then the box sill and the crawl space add a two-part foam with a fire-rated paint over the foam instead of just using a fire-rated foam.
Got it. Let me get back to you on that.
Okay. And then a couple of things I saw with the EV chargers and like I mentioned, Chris, I, this could be a misprint or maybe I misheard on the finance committee meeting, but it says existing service for two stations at Webster Street. I thought that was going to be new service for the two for the pickleball court.
It would be new service, not necessarily for the pickleball court, but new service.
But it would be on that parking lot across from the water treatment plant, right there on Webster Street, the diagonal.
Correct. We don't have, we don't have service there. I'm not sure if we have the infrastructure, but did want to make sure that Southside East was included in the consideration.
Yeah, yeah. It just states right here that it's an existing service in the contract. So and then the other question I have, and this might be for the deputy mayor Juliette. Why was First Ward Park picked? It was mentioned in the finance committee meeting, but the guy who was calling in went to hit something on his microphone and it squawked. So I have, there was no answer on why First Ward Park was picked for four EV chargers. Cause it's not really a spot, even though you can see it from the highway, a tourist is going to find real easy coming off the highway. And from my understanding, even men's slow pitch softball is maybe barely there two or three nights a week versus twenty years ago, and they don't have a pool. So I'm just curious why that destination was located, was picked.
I believe it was, part of the reason was it's a, there's a low representation of charging stations in the area. And it helped just spread it out everywhere. I'm not sure if there was a more technical reason.
No, I think, I mean, in discussions at the committee level, I think it was the, I mean, a goal was equitable distribution.
Just hate to spend money on something that won't end up being utilized, but maybe the one charge day or whatever that they put in the thing. I mean, obviously the rest of these down this list. And I, there's a reason why I've never mentioned Fairview Park because I know I don't have park in there. And the rest of them make sense that I, I just don't see where that park's going to get utilized for four chargers where Rec Park only has three, I believe. Instead of adding one or two more to rack and two at First Ward Park, we're putting four at First Ward Park when. Exactly. I don't, I don't have anything else. Like I said, I didn't know if there was any background to First Ward because you couldn't hear it in the meeting. I mean, I listened to it the whole day I was in the car and I mean, the guy, when he called in, I, somebody even commented it in the meeting that he was squawking and yeah, it just squawked out. Yeah. So I didn't know if there was an explanation as all, so.
I mean, certainly if council moved this forward at that, if those need to move or a portion that needs to move, we'll figure it out.
I think there should still be some in the first ward in the absence of our first ward representative.
I didn't say zero. I mean, technically we're going to talk about equity. East side's getting zero.
I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying.
I'm just, I'd hate to see them not get utilized.
Since we're, we are going, we're looking forward to receiving the financials. We have that to discuss a little bit. I mean, I think the location of a handful of EV chargers is something we can discuss internally if need be. Yeah. Doesn't, I don't see it as a major barrier to movement forward.
And our goal would be to ensure that you have your updated finance package prior to, I believe the next meeting is in two weeks. At that time to authorize the finance, finance package rather. So we can move forward with these before there's an even greater impact from tariffs. I mean, the folks I know who are in the construction industry here are acutely aware of that. So.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, other than the construction things, the two EV chargers, that doesn't, that's not going to change. That shouldn't hold me up anyways. I don't have anything else.
Just the financials, please.
Thank you again. Drive safe.
Yes. Have a good evening. Thank you so much. Moving on to RL twenty-five dash ninety-nine, our presenter is Charles Robinson, the comptroller, and I will hand it over to council member Kavanaugh, who's the finance committee chair.
You don't look a lot like Jeff Krueger. My goodness.
I would not want to be him. Hello, everybody. No, I meant like in charge of the water plant.
No. He doesn't care. He's probably fishing today. That was his number one thing. I'm going to go fishing. Yeah. Okay. So what is the tale of woe from the water plant today?
Well, I did have a conversation with him and he said basically what's in the expedited column. He said stormwater pumps must remain a priority and kept at the highest level of readiness. Our residents count on us doing everything we can to keep floodwaters at bay. With that being said, he does have a pump that will be need replacing. So that's what this is for. And I think it's at Front Street. I don't know which, which, which stone pump station is for, but I think it's on Front Street.
Is this a piece of equipment that's going bad, gone bad?
Going bad, yes, from what I understand. And it will be, need to be replaced this season.
And this was not anticipated before?
No. No.
And we did capital stuff.
I think, what was it? The last time? I think Jeff was here earlier this year. Who knows? Again, for pumps. But is there like a life cycle expectancy for pumps? Is this falling within like it's, it's like there's a fifteen-year? You can expect when you install this thing that it's going to last. I'm just want to know if like if
So, so most submersible pumps, their motors only have so many hours. So if it's something like as much rain as we've been getting and it's running more often, it'll cause the pump to burn itself up over time. Versus like, so if a pump sits and you don't use it for fifteen years, even a house pump, the moment you plug it in, it'll kick on. But if it's running every day for five years, then it'll probably burn up long before it gets to the fifteen years. And seeing that it's for stormwater with the rate we've been getting rain and it's probably hasn't been replaced in fifteen years.
That's what I want to know. I want to know when, when did it go in and how is it meeting the manufacturer's life expectancy or whatever? And I'm, I mean, you're not the right guy to ask that. I'm not sure.
I wish I could. I could, I mean, it's easy enough to be to go look in a fixed asset register, which I keep, but they should have maintenance registers at the plant that they, that we can look at and see when was, when it was purchased, when it was maintained, et cetera.
And you think the best way to find the money for this is dipping into contingency?
Well, that's where I could find it. It's the middle of the year, so I'm not exactly sure what budget lines I'm going to be able to utilize and then have to come back and plug that hole later at the end of the year.
But nothing, nothing surplus within the water fund itself?
Oh, no, no, not, not in the water fund. The water fund's pretty tight. And the sewer fund as well. I looked at the sewer fund just by chance. This, this, the pump is actually, I think the pump is actually about, I don't know the exact cost, but this is only a portion of it. So the rest, he does have money in this equipment line in his capital line. I'm just moving a little bit more so he can purchase it.
Can we find out the total cost of the?
I, I have that. I just didn't bring it down. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, Chuck, if you can get us the, the maintenance and the full finance, I wouldn't see an issue with moving this forward for expedition. But I mean, without some of that information, I always, it's always tough for me to want to just move something forward. I will call Mr. Brown tomorrow and one of the Mr. Browns, I don't know which one's in charge of the water or sewer portion of it, but see what I can get from him. But I think I have the invoice that Jeff sent me.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion for expedition.
I'll make the motion.
In a second.
I'll second. Based on, you know, we get this information tomorrow. Otherwise we'll, um, ask to pull it on Wednesday.
Yep, I agree. All right. We can do a roll call.
Councilmember Rathmo.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetski is absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon.
Aye.
Thank you. That is five zero.
Okay, we'll be moving on to RL twenty-five dash oh one. Chuck, you're still our presenter. And this is in the employees committee. And since the committee chair, council member Murray is absent, I will hand this over to council member Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. But this is RL twenty-five dash one oh one. A resolution to adopt the record of activities for elected slash, slash appointed officials not working a standard workday. So can you explain that?
Yes. Well, this is something that I think counts, council members that applied for retirement are, are familiar with, but this one is for the bingo inspector. This was an oversight. We got a notification from the retirement system saying he hadn't submitted one. So he or she hadn't submitted one. So we, we asked him, we asked the clerk's office to get his record of attendance and we can do the whole process now for him and he'll be fine with the retirement system. Basically it's approval here. The clerk signs off on it. We puts it on the website for thirty days. And then we submit it to the New York State Retirement System and then he'll be set.
And it looks like there's a copy of that in here too.
Yes, it's the twenty-four dash seventeen. That's, this is the one that the clerk has to certify. And then this is his record of activities. This can be kept locally here.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's it. Anybody have any other questions?
Looked like that St. Zero's bingo night keeps him pretty busy.
Friday night plans for you?
I gotta go.
Sure it does.
The money's at.
Well, Chuck, thank you so much. Okay. Yes, thank you. Have a good evening, guys. Yes, you too. Moving on to RL twenty-five dash oh two, the presenter is Samantha Costello, our deputy city clerk. It is in the committee of municipal and public affairs. And I'll hand it over to the committee chair, council member Middleton.
Thank you, President Dundon. This is RL twenty-five dash one oh two. A resolution, a resolution authorizing Binghamton Pride Coalition fireworks display.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Yep. The clerk's office is back down here with a fireworks resolution. Two-five dash one zero two is for the Binghamton Pride Coalition. We presented the exact same resolution last year. If there are any questions, please let me know.
It's, it's self-explanatory from last year. Is there, I thought one was being canceled. Is this the one that's being canceled? No, it's another one. Okay. Thank you. I was like, wait, okay. Thank you.
And what was canceled was an event, not a fireworks.
Okay.
This is just a who checks out the floating platform in the river and stuff?
So to my understanding, the fire department reviews all of these permits to make sure that the company is in compliance with what's expected from the fire department up to code, so to speak. And also they have to provide insurance. So the insurance company ensures that the platform is in compliance with safety regulations.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Sam. Moving on to RL twenty-five dash oh three, I will hand this over to council member Kavanaugh. Seeing that he's on rules and procedures, and I think he's the only member that's present tonight for me to present this.
I'm sorry, before we, was the last resolution requested for expedition?
Yes.
Yes, it was. Sorry. Thank you. I didn't even see that.
I'll motion to expedite.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm guessing no expl, or no discussions. We'll do a roll call. Thank you so much, councilmember Rathmo.
Councilmember Matavetski is absent. Councilmember Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon. Thank you. That is five zero.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Council President Dundon. Thank you. That is five zero.
So we'll move back on to RL twenty five dash one oh three, and I'll hand it over to council member Kavanaugh.
And I'll hand it right back to you to tell us about the uh, proposed uh, financial disclosure forms.
So this is an ordinance to amend code chapter fifty nine, code of ethics to include financial disclosure forms for elected and appointed official. Any individual who's subject to the filing requirements of both subdivision two of seventy three dash A of the public officers law and of the fifty nine dash five may satisfy the requirements of this section by filing a signed copy of the statement filed pursuant to the public officers law. The elected, the following elected officials will have to fill this out, which will be the mayor and the legislators of city council, uh, the department heads, agencies, divisions, their deputies and assistants, and there's pretty much every department in there. And also members of the following boards, councils, commissions, bureaus and agencies, and those include the BLDC bureau, the Binghamton Johnson City Joint Sewage Board, Board of Contract and Supply, Board of Electrical Examiner's, Board of Estimate and Pro- Proportionment, Board of Examining Plumbers, Civil Service Commission, the Commission for Conservation of the Environment, COD, CDAC, Human Rights Planning, Shade Tree Traffic Board, Water Street Development Corp., and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So basically everybody who's going to be working or doing something in city hall will have to fill out this financial disclosure. Any questions?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm reading here. It's, it has like certain dates. We have to put, I mean, file in our um, our financial disclosures. What happens if we don't?
So I am tentatively still working with a corp counsel on a couple of enforcement mechanisms. Uh, one could be honor before June first. The director of personnel or city clerk can inspect the disclosure statements um, or have um, uh, honor before June fifteenth, the director of personnel or city clerk shall notify the reporting individual in writing stating that a deficiency exists. If it continues to go on, um, as of August first, the director of personnel or city clerk shall file a report to the city council, the office of the mayor with copy to the reporting individual. The report shall be included in the individual's permanent personnel file as appropriate, and the final report shall include a list of all non-filing individuals and a list of individuals who deficiency has not been cured and a list of individuals in violation. So that way we'll at least know who's not filling it out and depending on what position they have, like if they sit on a board or a commission, we would potentially be able to remove them.
Okay. Um, I like this idea, but one of the things that I worry about is it being used like against like someone in a way. Um, I'll, I'll just, what'd you say? Were you going to say something? No, I, I'm, that's, that's my only thing. I'm, I mean, before it was last year, um, my first year on council, I had someone like reach out to my job regarding my financial um, disclosure to kind of use it against me. That's, that's my only like I, it, this is good to help, but I'm also worried about how it may be used as something against someone or try to like say that they've done something wrong or like, because that was, I, you know, that was done to me before, so.
Well, I, I mean, they did try to attack me, appointing council member Costi. I mean, you're always going to have people that are going to try to use something in nefarious ways, but to bring this transparency, seeing this is something that the county has done for years. I could be wrong, but I'm almost positive both the county union and the Village of Johnson City do this. Um, the, so the fact that we do not have a financial disclosure and with all the different people that sometimes wear different hats, how do you know somebody's not reaching in the cookie jar?
That is true.
Well, and I, I think the opportunity and the transparency as well would be to either counter or outright preempt anyone attempting to call someone out maliciously or nefariously for ill intent. Um, and try to make a narrative out of it if we're, if it's required and we submit as required. There's nothing to come against unless there actually is something to come against, which I guess would be the point, but that certainly was not the case in your situation.
Yeah.
I, I mean, that's how I look at it. Anybody who's really going to fight this must have something to hide.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I was just saying something that it might be used in a way, but I understand.
Nate, any questions for me?
The only thing, I think it's, it's the the breadth that we have here is, is excellent, but I think like um, like having people on the Shade Tree Commission filing the same uh, financial disclosures as the mayor is kind of interesting. It, it, I think there's, there's certain roles that are on this that are um, don't inherently deal with money. Like the traffic board, maybe? So there, there's things that it's just like me, should understand that we're doing like the, the broadest um thing possible. I don't know. I, I'm just thinking.
I mean, to me, it's, to, to, to me, it's going to be an all or none because if you let one commission slide, then why would, how can you argue against not letting another one without it kind of discriminating on the commission? So to me, it's an all or none.
I also think there are different forms of influence than just financial. So there's the financial disclosure and someone who sits on a committee that may not necessarily make decisions regarding uh, allocations or funding distribution. There's still a level of influence with an appointment to a municipal committee responsible for making decisions.
I mean, I, I don't I don't know that simply being involved in any governmental function should require one to you know, disclose that much private information relationships. I mean, I, I think that people have a, just a basic right to privacy at a certain level and that you shouldn't have to surrender that to participate in government. And I think as broad as this is, you may also run into some issues of, of people uh, not um, you know, perhaps not willing to step up to some leadership roles in the city because of that. Um, and I don't think we should take the view that simply because people don't want to disclose that sort of information, that there's not something necessarily nefarious going on. I don't think we should create that expectation. Uh, you know, that's, that's different for uh, I think, you know, choosing to be an elected official is, 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 is a different standard and, and maybe some of the higher level things, but I do think there's a difference um, in the level of of what you're taking on and what you're being asked to give up.
And see, I disagree there. Anytime you're going to volunteer to work in any level of government, you give up your privacy because you put yourself on the public eye.
I fundamentally disagree with that.
Hey, that's what we can do is agree to disagree.
For the other municipalities, including the county that have this expectation and requirement, what is the breadth of uh, of those mandates? Is it this, the same broad?
Yeah, it's pretty much the exact same thing. Yeah, I didn't try to reinvent the wheel.
To, yeah. I'd be, I mean, I'd be curious about feedback from from them, kind of how the conversations went when they were making those decisions and what. But I, I would also be curious if folks had recommendations in terms of what benchmarks to consider if we're not that, that to me would be the challenge of, okay, who's included? And who isn't? And can we responsibly make the distinction? Like what the metric would be? I'm not sure. There could be one.
Anyone else?
I think like excluding the, the conversation of who's, who's included or excluded. Um, the overall, I am supportive of this change and I, I think I had introduced it last year or an earlier draft of it. Um, and yeah, it I think it just makes sense that there's some level of, of oversight. And it, it, to me, it was weird that we didn't have this already. So um, that's why I'm, I'm welcoming it. But the the detail portion of it, it'd be, I wish we could just uh, copy um, the, the county's process and utilize their infrastructure that's there already. Uh, rather than having the idea of creating our own Board of Ethics within the city of Binghamton, because I think we are pretty, we have quite a number of wards already. Um, wards and commissions. But I think this is a, a fair alternative that we're, we're offering right now.
Yeah, because to add a little to that, I did meet with the county executive to see if it was something we could do as like a shared services agreement and the county would not do that.
I'm also excited to see this considered and, and move forward. I think anything, especially given the federal climate in terms of appointments and deals and what we're observing every single day in that regard. I think the effort to distinguish ourselves as much as possible in terms of transparency. It's a positive direction.
And I mean, if somebody does submit it and say it is like the trade, the Shade Tree Commission, wow, I can't speak today. And we don't feel that, that position warrants to be called out or looked at any harder. No one says we have to hang somebody or crucify him when versus a position like one of ours who doesn't fill out their financial disclosure. I mean, I know for the most part, it's legally sound as is minus tweaking the enforcement. Anyone else?
I think we should um, have the form attached and circulated. I think I don't, uh, I didn't think it was that intrusive when I looked at it, so. Um, maybe if people, maybe if people see that form also, it'll be less of a I don't know. Let, feel less invasive.
And there's already, I mean, for having formerly sat on CDAC, there's already a, an expectation, particularly because CDAC is dealing with allocations and recommendations regarding funding. There's already an expectation that appointees are identifying if there's a potential conflict of interest and committing themselves to remove themselves from conversations if there is. Um, so while that may not be true for every sitting committee, there is already a measure of declaration involved in agreeing to an appointment.
I saw the wheels turning. I was waiting for you, councilman. All right. If nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
In a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye, meeting adjourned.